Greetings, everyone. Welcome to a special meeting on a Tuesday night. I'm going to call this meeting to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Face our nation's colors, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Do I have any additions or deletions?
Mr. Mayor, no additions or deletions, but we would like to move the official comments, number two, and add it with number five with staff and official comments. Item number five, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Seeing no one opposed, motion carries. Before we get into the presentation tonight, I want to say to each of you that's in the room that took the time to come out here and listen to a very thorough, hopefully thorough, presentation, that the greatest asset that we have in this town are our town employees, every town employee regardless of your role, of what you do to support our great community and the citizens that live in our great community. To our police department, we hear you. That's why we called a special meeting tonight. We're concerned, but please know that fact-finding and information gathering is what good leaders do before we make decisions. And that's what we're doing tonight, is that we're gathering information, we're fact-finding. And this all comes from some meetings that we had this week with the commissioners and the police chief. We realized early that we needed a meeting like tonight to be fully transparent, not only with the full board, but with you, each of you. We've got a huge mission in front of us, and we think it's fair, in fact, we know it is, that we share all the information before we make decisions, which is coming up next Monday, December 18th, when we will have some financial options. And I just wanted to be clear and upfront about where we're at tonight and what we're going to do. Police chief's going to present, along with the HR director. We're going to talk about retention and recruitment. We're going to talk about the current operations of our police department and how hard they work for our citizens in this community every day. That's what we're going to hear tonight. There's not going to be any public comments tonight under special meeting. We don't allow public comments, but we will have those available on December 18th. So with that said, we can begin the presentation, and let's learn something about our police department, of what they're doing great, what they would like to do, and how we can help them. Chancellor, it's yours.
Thank you, Mayor Bellflowers. As you stated, this is a result of very extensive conversations that we've had with Police Chief Dollinger, and extensive conversations we've had from the moment you were sworn in. You've been very integrated with these conversations, and you made it very clear that we wanted to at least provide an opportunity for our officers to be heard. And so with that said, I'll turn it over to Chief Dollinger to provide us with his presentation for this evening.
I just wanted to take this time to, before we start, to thank the Mayor Bellflowers, Mayor Protam McCray, and the rest of the Board of Commissioners, as well as Town Manager McLaughlin, for bringing this forward. When I was hired in January of 2022, one of my first duties was to conduct a complete assessment of what, of the police department, top to bottom, what we needed to do. That's what you're paying me to do, to assess its needs, assess its future, develop a strategic plan. One of the things I identified at this time, at that time, is with the growth of the town, the police department will have to grow as well in order to continue to provide the level of service that the citizens, as well as you as the elected officials, demand from the police department. I did submit a pay study and manpower study back to the old town manager back in 2022, so this has been a lengthy process. So I wanted to thank you for moving so fast and allowing me to present this information to you today. And I'd be remiss if I didn't take time to acknowledge the officers that I'm here to represent. I started wearing a police uniform when I was 14 as a police explorer, worked my way up, 38 years of being in uniform, and I've worked with some awesome officers. And some of these Hope Mills officers are amongst the best, and I'm honored to lead them and to advocate for them here tonight. So with that, I wanted to thank you, and then we can move on. Can you, how do we, how do I straighten it out? Do we know? The whole thing?
The whole, yeah.
Oh, I see. There we go. As you can tell, I'm not very tech savvy, so you don't include that in my salary, I'm okay with it. We're pretty good that way. I don't know IT stuff, so no problem if you dock me a little bit. So we're here to discuss two very critical issues, pay and staffing levels. Both are interconnected. If one's low, the other's low. So these are some of the issues that we have with our pay here, is other local agencies, particularly the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office and Fayetteville PD, are paying officers much better. I've already had a number of officers over the last six weeks, five to be exact, that left for higher-paying jobs. One, as recent as yesterday, gave his notification that he's going to start with the Veterans Administration Police Department on January 29th. The feedback I'm getting is strictly for pay. We've worked very hard over the last two years to rebrand our organization, become more heavily involved in our community, improve morale, attract some good officers to move the police department forward along with the town. I have four more letters already been submitted by officers advising their intent to leave and apply for the Fayetteville PD or Cumberland County Sheriff's Office. And I'll get into why those two agencies are important in the next couple of slides. So lower pay, or when officers perceive they have lower pay, we have lower morale. It lowers our motivation and our productivity. And at times, we've worked, we've worked pretty diligently to try to at least correct this problem. We've had officers of lower rank making more than officers of higher rank just because of the pay differential. So as I mentioned, Fayetteville PD and Cumberland County Sheriff's is our main, is our main competition here. And both agencies over the last year have given their officers significant raises because, like all law enforcement agencies across the country, we're competing for a small pool of applicants. When I, you know, applied to be a police officer, we had hundreds of officers, hundreds of people wanting to take the job. Certain things that occurred across the country over the last few years have caused people to shy away from pursuing careers in law enforcement, officers to retire early to get out of public scrutiny, and therefore it's created a gap and a manpower shortage for agencies across the country. So organizations have had to get creative to attract and to retain their officers. And the reason why Fayetteville and Cumberland County, we consider to be our two biggest competitors, is because they're right here. Our officers live in town, they already own homes, their spouses work locally, their children attend schools locally, and they may be willing to drive a little bit, but to drive an hour and take, you know, add two hours, three hours to your workday when that's time away from your family, that's an issue. So what I did to set off, because I've worked for bosses that would prepare their budget by just adding 5% on to what they spent last year, and that does, that's a disservice because that's, you're not really, you're not really analyzing what your needs are, and it's not fair to the taxpayers. So what I like to do is, if you ask Mr. McLaughlin, my budget proposal each year is a six-inch binder backed with facts and data, because that's how you can make an educated decision, and I believe along with you, Mayor and the board, is transparency is the key. So what I did is, is I went, all public data, I went to Fayetteville Police Department, Cumberland Police Department, and I chose, I actually went individual officer by individual officer, but for the sake of saving time, instead of listing, you know, 400 officers from Fayetteville, what I did is I chose each rank, and I chose what their lowest-paid officer's making, lowest-paid officer holding that title, and what their highest-paid officer is holding that title makes. And you can see, you can see the difference here. The lowest-paid police officer, patrolman, or detective in Fayetteville starts at 45 and finishes out at 64,500, and that's without any incentives, which I'll discuss later on in the presentation. Cumberland County starts at 50 and finishes up at 79, and then there's Hope Mills that is significantly lower. And that is pretty skewed because the high end there, that's only one officer, and he has 16 years on the job, and that's what he's making. You can see all the way down the ranks, sergeants in both organizations, lieutenants, captains, majors, assistant chiefs and chiefs, there's a $35,000 or $40,000 differential between what those officers are making and what officers here in Hope Mills, holding the same rank, are making. And we need to be, we need to be honest here. My officers are doing the same job, they're doing the same work, they have the same responsibility. There's no wall between us and the county and Fayetteville, but they have more of it because obviously they have more people, right? But we're dealing with the same types of crimes, the same, the same types of quality of life issues that those other agencies are dealing with, just on a lesser base because we have less people and we're smaller geographically. But they're doing the same job. So of course I'm going to provide a recommendation, which is to implement our, my pay proposal to include raises, step programs, special pay for special skills and incentives, which I'll address a little later on. And I'll discuss this too further on in the presentation. When I prepared this presentation, I did so with fiscal responsibility. I understand that the town of Hope Mills doesn't have the tax base as Fayetteville and all of Cumberland County does, so obviously you wouldn't be able to pay our officers the same amount as those other agencies. So I prepared this realistically. But after dozens of hours of preparing this, what I came up with was a fair plan that will make us competitive, because I believe Hope Mills is on the verge of being one of the, if not already, being one of the best police departments in the area, you know? And I really, I really believe that. We've worked really hard to do that over the last two years. I think, I think every day that goes by, we take steps in that right direction, and there are things that we offer that other agencies don't, but we just can't, we can't bridge the gap unless we're competitive in pay. And that's, that's what the purpose of this study is. So why is the step plan important? So it promotes longevity and retention, which results in more experienced officers working for the department. So currently, right now, we have a very inexperienced young department. I would say 65% or higher have less than three years on the job. So we have officers serving as field training officers and acting sergeants, acting supervisors that are just learning their job, their job themselves, but because we're so young and because of the turnover rate, that's what we're forced to deal with. So a step program promotes longevity, it promotes, it gives officers a reason to stay within agency, and the longer they stay, the more experience they obtain, and that we can put that experience to work. Most law enforcement agencies, both locally and across the country, have step plans. Raises of our, step plan will help because raises of our current officers determined by position and step plan. For argument's sake, if you have six years, you look at where six years are within that step plan, that's the salary you're going to be, that's where you're going to get put at. It allows us hiring officers, hire, when we hire officers that are already trained from outside agencies, then we can, we can stick them in the plan according to their years of experience. So if somebody has eight years, okay, this is what you're going to make. If you have three years, this is what you're going to make. It's been a guess game for the last few years. There, the difference and the disparity between pay with officers with experience and who starts at what, what number, and where they are in the salary range is, it's a mess. And we do have a salary range, but unfortunately, none of the officers, there's no vehicle to get to the end of the range. When I first got there, it was an 18-year veteran, he wasn't even at the middle of the range yet. It's 18 years. So this will help us place those officers that we're hiring from other agencies in the guide to measure in with their years of experience. Officers have a way through move the salary guide, which is what I just said, and the starting salary doesn't pass the salary of current employees. Historically, the starting salary of new officers at HMPD has gone up, and then current employees are only receiving COLA and merit. So the difference between those, the years, it becomes compressed. So officers here, as the starting salary goes up, officers that are already here, their salary is increasing as high as the starting salary is, and it's compressing the salaries. So this is the step plan I came up with. It will put us very competitive with, it's still not as high as Fayetteville, it's definitely not as high as Cumberland County, and it gives us, it gives an officer every year on their anniversary date, so if you're hired for, on June 10th for argument's sake, every year on June 10th, you would get your anniversary, your step, okay, your step, your step increase as you move through the pay scale. It caps out at 10 years. So it's, so 10 years, you'll increase from $48,063, $15,000 increase. Now that does not include COLA and cost of living. That would still need to be, need to be, need to be earned, you know, based on the whole department or the whole town, whatever, to give the whole town in order to keep those, the step plan alive. And once you implement a step plan, major adjustments to the pay, like I'm asking for today, or what you're considering today, don't have to be done as often because it increases, so the pay keeps, the pay keeps going up. So if there's no raise, or there's no significant raise, like there hasn't been here in 10 years, then that, you know, you'll have to make a major adjustment again to keep up with the other agencies. But if we implement a step plan, it eliminates a lot of that concern. Other issues connected to low pay, it's very difficult to recruit and retain officers and grow the department along with the growth in the town, both geographically and with the population. And as we know, Ashley, please, as we know, before I discuss the crime stats, we are growing not only in population, but we're growing geographically as well, because the annexation is expanding our jurisdictional responsibilities. So now we're on the other side of 95 already. So where our response timer already are taxed because of the distance that we have to travel, and that's only going to increase as the town continues to grow. So the crime stats, I just gave you a brief synopsis instead of having a bunch of graphs. You can see here, we're maintaining, and I'll tell you that 2022 was higher than 2021. We're already, we're already increasing in certain areas, maintaining in others, we're up by one in burglary, motor vehicle thefts, we're up, we're up, accidents, we're up, you can tell, and that's only going to continue to increase as congestion in town increases. Calls for service, we're steady, arrests, we're up. And you can see here, the thing that we're drastically down on is traffic citations, because if you're working short, officers are going from call to call to call and can't be as proactive as we'd like them to be to address dangerous traffic violations. So that's why you can see the reduction there. So as I talk about, as I said, we're going to address both issues at the time, pay and staffing. We talk about staffing, it's very easy for somebody to come up and just say, hey, I need more officers, we're getting busier, we need to, we need to, you know, town's growing, I need this many officers. But like I mentioned earlier, I try to do it based on data. And the FBI publishes a report periodically with, with the average number of officers in police departments across the country. So it's broken down nationally, the average number of officers nationally, and then it's broken down according to region, regions in the country, and then it's broken down even further by cities and their population. So what I did to predict the future, or try to predict the future a little bit, is the average number of officers per 1,000 residents for cities located in the south with a population between 10,000 and 24,999, which Hope Mills is currently at, and we'll address the population growth in a little while, according to the FBI is 2.3. The average number of officers per 1,000 residents for cities located in the south with a population between 25,000 and 49,000, which Hope Mills will eventually get to if the, with all the approved housing and stores and stuff like that, and this is just talking about residents too. This doesn't talk about people that come to Hope Mills to support the, to visit the athletic complexes, or to, you know, shop at the stores, or attend the schools, so that, of course, the transient population on a daily basis makes that a lot higher. But just the growth, the predicted growth, so the average number of officers in the south with population between 25,000 and 49,000 is 2.0. So what I did is I split the difference, right? Where 2.3, 2.0, this is why I wouldn't overestimate, and I wouldn't underestimate, figures pulling the difference puts us pretty much where we need to be. So the recommended number of officers per 1,000 Hope Mills residents is 2.1. Now again, I just didn't come up with those numbers based on what the FBI did. I attended Northwestern Police Staff and Command School, which is very, very large, arduous school, and a good six weeks is spent on just predicting manpower needs. And you can break it down towards, through part-one crimes, part-two crimes, how many detectives you need, distance, whether, whether patrol zones are situated across bodies of water, all that kind of stuff. But simply put, it's number, number of officers per 1,000 residents, and then there's the formula that you use. And O's number of officers, FPO is the factor that converts the workload measure, which is the population, into the number of officers, which is the conversion factor. P is the workload factor in population. So if you take 2.1 times the total population divided by 1,000, number of officers needed is, per 1,000, is, per 1,000 residents is just 2.1. The estimated population growth, last year when I submitted my manpower study and I conducted my initial assessment of the police department, I met with Mr. McLaughlin, who at the time was the town planner, and I asked him to give me some numbers on what the predicted growth in population would be based on the already-approved housing developments and apartment complexes, and this does not include stores or anything like that. So you can see that we, the estimated population was going to double over the next 10 years. So what I did is I just divided, I just divided that by the number of years. In 2022, with the conversion factor and the formula I just described, we needed 46.2 officers. In 2023, we need 50.4. Now, I'll give you, the population may be a little less, but it may be a little more. You know, we, there's no way to predict it right now because we're in between census and, you know, we, tracking the building and growth and stuff like that. But these are the numbers Mr. McLaughlin had provided to me at the time. And you can see as we, as time goes on, we'll need more officers if the population continues to grow. Now, if something happens and the population doesn't grow as fast as it is, then those numbers could be tweaked, but that's just, that's estimations. And I'll talk about it later. Hope Mills is a municipal influence area as an aggressive annexation. So when people build complexes, there's, there's a good chance they're going to, they're going to annex into the town as we grow. So in 2015, and here's a little concern, in 2015, our approved staffing level was 44 sworn officers, and now in 2023, we're down to 41. We gave up a sworn, and some of this was before I got here, we gave up a sworn officer's position so that we could hire a victim advocate, which pays dividends. Our victim advocate is awesome, we're one of, you know, few agencies to have it, it's a great service that we're able to, so I'm not, I'm not saying, oh wow, we shouldn't have hired her, she's great. We, you know, if we had more of her, we'd be good to go. But we had to give up a sworn officer's position for that. Same thing with the evidence technician, didn't pay to have a sworn officer managing our evidence facility, that doesn't pay, we'd rather have a sworn officer on the street, but we civilianized that position and we gave up a sworn, sworn spot. And then one position was eliminated, and nobody can tell me why. So our staffing, our current staffing level right now, authorized staffing level, and I'll get further into it, was, at the beginning of this year, it was 41 officers. Now out of the 41, right now, we're currently at, we're currently at 39. Out of the 39, I have two officers that are out burning terminal leave and retiring, one at the end of this month, one in February. One officer gave their notice, I spoke earlier to take a position with the Veterans Administration Police Department, so they'll be leaving. And I have one officer out on admin leave, which leaves 35 officers available for work. Out of that 35 officers, I have one officer on light duty. We have six officers awaiting certification, and this is something beyond our control. The state is horrendous with getting certifications back for police officers. When I was hired in St. Paul's in 2019, my certification came back in five weeks or less. The wait now, it's up to between 10 and 12 weeks. So you hire a qualified officer, submit all their paperwork, it's 12 weeks before they issue the certification to put that officer in, either on the road, on their own, or through the FTO program. So we're waiting 12 weeks, which doesn't seem like a long time, but it is when you're sure. We have, so that leaves 28 officers available for work, and that doesn't account for officers out on vacation, sick, comp time, mandatory training. And we're big on training. Training reduces liability. The better trained you are, the better educated you are, studies have shown, the less liability there are. Better trained officers, better educated officers make less mistakes. Of course, mistakes can always, can always still happen, but it reduces the amount of mistakes made, and it reduces liability resulting from lawsuits. The town did approve two additional officers for the fiscal year 2023 and 2024. I asked for nine, so we can get to the estimated number that we needed according to the FBI. Mr. McLaughlin, far farce, we're able to get two, thanks to the board. So that would put us up to 43. We just applied for a grant, there was 500 agencies that applied, we're one of 10 that were awarded the grant, which will give us three additional officers at an extremely reduced course, reduced cost to the town. So that would put us at 46. However, we can't, we can't get people to hire to achieve that rank, which would put us in a much, in a much better position.
Chief, before you-
Yes, sir.
Go back to that slide.
Yes, sir.
This slide is the transparency that this board is talking about and why we scheduled this special meeting tonight. You can see it right there in one slide, the importance of what tonight's fact-finding and information gathering is. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir. Causes of manpower shortage, of course, low pay, the reduced applicant pool. We have a limited selection of qualified applicants. The bigger agencies like Fayetteville and Cumberland County that are, that are, that are our biggest competition, they run their own academies, and they're, they're very proactive in recruiting the most qualified applicants. So a lot of people go to those agencies, which reduces our, the number of qualified applicants left for us to hire drastically. I mentioned again, competition between the agencies, which is not so for other town departments. I'm not here to say only, only the police department deserves a raise. We advocate for all the Hope Mills employees, I just want to go on the record as saying that. Everybody does fantastic job, Parks and Rec, Public Works, everybody, Stormwater, and we can't do our job without them. So we're not here to say that we only, we deserve a raise, that's not what I'm here for. However, we are in a unique situation because there's not competition like there is for law enforcement because of reduced number of applicants, right? You may have somebody from Public Works go to a higher salary job in Fayetteville Public Works. However, there's not that competition like there is for law enforcement agencies, not just locally, but across the country. But here locally, that's our two biggest competitions. That's why we're in a unique situation. That's why it would be detrimental to us if we had to wait for the completion of the town's pay study to move forward. That's why we're here, we're here discussing this tonight. And the competition exists because there are higher salaries, they're having signing bonuses. Fayetteville sent their whole recruiting unit to Puerto Rico. They brought back 17 applicants a few years ago and then paid their rent while they attended BLET. We can't compete with that kind of recruitment, we don't have the funds to do that, so we have to kind of try to think outside of the box. The other reason why is a cause of manpower shortage is past failure to fill vacancies in a timely manner. When I took over, we were ten short. And that existed like that for a long time. And that's because we didn't, we didn't work hard to fill the vacancies. Liabilities, manpower shortage, obviously officer safety. If we don't have enough officers on the road to back each other up, it, it puts our officers at, at risk. And on an off note, if one of our officers make an arrest, or, or sometimes we're, you know, we're busy, we have two, two officers making arrests, and they have to go to the county jail, they could spend two hours there to turn over their prisoners. I recognize that. We tried to, we tried to make it so that we could keep our officers in town longer. So we, we, we took the initiative to get a grant to get our own digital fingerprint machine. So now our officers don't have to spend time fingerprinting them at the county jail. We can fingerprint right here at Hope Mills. The state, we're the only one in Cumberland County, other than the sheriff's office at the jail, to have our own intoxa, intoximeter for drunk drivers. So we have it here so our officers can process the drunk drivers here, instead of going to the county jail and having to sit there and do the processing there for an hour and a half or two hours and then wait two more hours to turn over their prisoners. We've done, we are, I approached the head magistrate and the, the chief district court judge and asked if we can start to do virtual appearances for probable cause. We're the only agency around that does this. Maybe one of the only agencies in the state. I had done it up north. I didn't see why we couldn't do it here. So instead of our officers having to drive and waste time and wait in line with all the other officers from the county to see a magistrate to get probable cause issued, to issue a citation, our officers can do it virtually. So that's, that's, and that's stage one. We have stage two and stage three. Now that this has been successful, that chief magistrate, Howard Miller and I are going to implement, again, stage two after the new year, and then stage three a few months after that to make sure everything goes smooth. Eventually, we won't even have to, if all goes well, we won't even have to appear in front of the magistrate in person to get probable cause on a search warrant. We'll be able to do everything virtually, which is technology working for us like it should. So increased response time. Obviously, less officers, bigger geographical area, more calls for service. It increases our response time. Elimination of special divisions. This is a last resort. I don't, I don't want to do this, but my number one priority is to chief of police is make sure when somebody calls nine-one-one, somebody shows up, right? And we have to have an officer show up. But a lot of call, a lot of times, that's not where it stops. The initial, initial officer takes it, takes a report, and then there's follow-ups to do, which is our detective bureau handles. And, and so for argument's sake, your, your house gets burglarized and you have ten thousand dollars worth of personal property stolen. The officer does a thorough report. It gets reviewed the next day. It gets assigned to a detective for follow-up. That detective is going to go out and he's going to canvass the area. He's going to, he's going to look at, he or she's going to look at pawn shops. They're going to, they're going to attend meetings with other detective bureaus to see what the trends are, and they're going to find out who committed the burglary. If we keep losing officers at the, at the rate we're leaving and I, and I'm forced to temporarily shut down the detective bureau, then what we'll have to, what they'll have to do is they'll have an officer respond, they'll take the initial report, do the best they can. The officer will conduct the investigation the best they can, try to do some of those things the best to their ability. But then the follow-up is, is, is where it gets neglected, unfortunately. We'll be unable to maintain community engagement activities at the rate we are. We, I mean, I'm a firm believer in doing the hard work with the community before an incident occurs, right? To date, from January first of two thousand and twenty-three till today, December twelfth, we've done ninety-two community events this year, and that's this year alone. We brought back National Night Out, which we haven't done in years. We did a bike rodeo. We do hop with a cop, shop with a cop, coffee with a cop. You can do just about anything in town here with a cop. We're there. We're at, we're setting up tables at community engagements. We're, and, but, and but we're out there, you know? And we have a community engagement team. And, and what that does, to speak to your point about building transparency, it builds transparency and it does the hard work. It builds those trusting relationships that are necessary in case something does, does go wrong later on. The community knows they're used to dealing with us. We've been honest with them all along. It helps build that trust and the hard work is done prior to one of those kind of critical incidents occurring in town. And a lot of municipalities across the country have learned that lesson the hard way when, when they didn't do the hard work and then they had a critical incident and then, which resulted in riots and stuff because they didn't take the time to build the trust with their community members. Increasing criminal activity, obviously, that goes without saying. Reduction on hiring standards. So lesser pool of applicants, you know, we're, we're, we're forced to hire, as opposed to hiring the best possible candidates sometimes. We've, we've, we've been a victim of hiring only officers that meet the minimum standards. And what happens is we found is that those officers have not been able to complete our FTO program or, or get off of probation because they're, they're not the most qualified. And we've had to let officers go. Unfortunately, that's only, unfortunately, that's only been in, in certain circumstances. And then training suffers. If we don't have officers to work the road and answer calls, then I can't send them to additional training. And training is key, as I mentioned before, in reducing civil life. Other concerns, manpower shortage. Hope Mills, as you know, sitting on the board, one of the fastest growing communities in North Carolina. We need to be able to provide high-level service to the residents and to visitors. The aggressive annexation due to the municipal influence area, which I mentioned earlier on. Increase in homes and businesses result in increase for calls for service. Just a numbers game. If you have more businesses, there's more shoplifting. If you have more, more delivered into homes, there's, there's more, more need for police services, whether it's neighborhood disputes or, or what it is, missing, missing kids. I mean, as the numbers go up, those types of calls go up and we need to be able to respond. Traffic congestion. You get off ninety-five, it takes me twenty minutes sometimes, depending on the time of day, to make it to police headquarters. And studies show, or just a study published, I read two days ago, studies show shortage of police officers results in increasing traffic fatalities because officers don't have time to address the, the severe traffic violations as often as they should. We don't have a traffic unit because all of our officers are assigned to patrol and, and, and that, and that's what occurs. On recruitment and retention. So the problem we have is, 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 is the recruitment and retention based on our competition with those other agencies. Other agencies are offering substantial signing bonuses. We can't do that. Other agencies are offering incentives. They, education stipend, you get a certain amount every year if you have an associate's degree, bachelor's degree or master's degree. It goes up. Intermediate and advanced certifications. That's, that's recognized by the state. The state issues them. And you need certain number of years on the job, certain experience, and you need to complete certain, certain training in order to, to obtain both of those certifications. And it, and that's, it's an impressive feat for officers. Not, not a lot of officers have advanced training certi-, excuse me, certificates. For argument's sake, would be somebody that's a traffic accident reconstructionist. So if we have a fatal accident in town here, we don't have a reconstructionist. We have two officers that are, that are one class away from becoming actual action or reconstructionist. So we have a fatal accident that would force us to have to rely on a highway patrol or another agency to come in and investigate that fatal accident and reconstruct it for us. We're two, where we have two officers one class away. That's, that's the kind of advanced training certificate, certificate, um, speaking of specialized skills. Other agencies offer specialized position stipends. So detectives make a little extra money than regular patrol because of increased responsibilities and officers on like an emergency service unit, which in layman's terms would be a SWAT team. Our recruitment. Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Chief, for, I have a question about the, essentially, I guess, would be about recruitment. So from what you're saying is if, if someone wants to come to the Hope Mills Police Department and they have, let's say they're starting entry level. I don't, I don't know. I'm assuming it's something like the military, E-one pay, whatever. One has a college degree, the other one is just, you know, right out of BLET. They get essentially the same pay right now?
They get the same pay.
They get the same pay. So no college degree will, right now, doesn't do anything. Okay. So, all right, thank you.
Yep. And then, and you know, and, and to speak to that point a little further, if they're going to get, you know, it may, it may encourage officers to go for those advanced, advanced degrees that are currently on because they say, hey, if I get my bachelor's, I might get a two percent raise. If I get my master's, I may get a three and a half percent raise. So it's encouraging them to increase their education, which again, goes back to reducing liability. We do all of these things here. We're very proactive with recruitment. We really are. We attend job fairs. We're at one today at the Fayetteville Tech. We were there and we, we, we attend them quite frequently. We have social media outreach. We, we have a huge presence on social media now. I can't keep up with all the names. I think one's called X. It used to be Twitter or something like that. Facebook, some of the other ones. But I have a social media person that's out there all the time, posting our vacancies, posting, you know, encouraging people to come here to Hope Mills. We set up tables at all of our community events with flyers, trying to encourage people to come. Proactive individual recruitment. What I mean by that is I, I encourage my officers, hey, you know, I hope Chief Braden and Sheriff Wright isn't, isn't paying attention to his presentation today because I'm like, call that guy from Fayetteville, you know, and see if he wants to come work for us because we could take him. So I'm, we're trying to steal some officers, you know, that we know they're a great officers to bring here to Hope Mills. But I'm saying I adjust. But that's what I mean by individual recruitment. BLE, BLET presentations. My, my, my staff goes to the BLET programs in Robinson County, Scotland County, that other, Scott, is it? Moore, Moore County and, and Fayetteville. And they're, they're making pitches to the, to the, to the, to the students that are attending the BLET programs. The problem we have is that they're like, hey, great presentation, love to work for you, but Fayetteville was here yesterday and, you know, they're paying me more and that, and that's where I'm going to go. So that's the problem we have. And we even advertise on a, on a, on a, on a town website. Retention strategies. We try to treat our people right. So we try to accommodate family needs when assigning routine schedules. And, and what I mean by that is some of our officers, significant others are in the military or they work for other police departments. So if they have, if they're on the same schedule, when they're off, my officers will be off and they get quality time with their family, as opposed to being on different schedules and just working, never seeing your family. Because when you're working twelve-hour shifts, you're either working or you're sleeping. You have very little time, you know, in, in between that. So if you're on your three-day work week and your wife is off, and then by the time you get off, she's on her three-day work week, you never see each other. Some may like that. I don't know, right? But, but for the most part, they want to be with their families. So just to add a little humor. So opportunities for officers to participate in special assignments outside of normal duties. We're, we're very encouraging when it, I started a task force in two thousand and twenty. Now it's grown exponentially. It's the Southeastern Regional North Carolina Violent Crimes Task Force. We operate in multiple jurisdictions. We send as many officers that want to go there as possible because it gives them something outside of their normal day to look forward to. And it gives them experience that they can bring back here. We have task force officers, DEA, ATF. We have one now, starting with the FBI, Homeland Security. Not only does it expand our network and our resource, but we, we get to use those federal resources to help us here, but it gives officers something else to do. We do morale-building activities. We, we had an award ceremony and recognition for the first time this year. It was the first one in, in many years. We do family events such as baseball and hockey games. This past Saturday, we all went to the marksman hockey game over at the Crown. First time I was ever there. It was a great time. We had a lot of fun. We do holiday parties. We, we do competition, cook-off competitions, although one's, one officer's significant other continues to win. I don't know, three in a row, but he is a good cook. But, but that being said, we, we do those kind of things. And now we're starting a co-ed softball team for the spring to compete against some other agencies and maybe the fire department. We're going to beat them, by the way. I'm just predicting that. Extra duty assignments. We have extra duty assignments. So we, we work at the Millstone Theater. We work at the Putt-Putt, Southview Baptist, GameStop, and sometimes we get some, some roadwork. So that allows officers an opportunity to make a little extra money because they're paid privately by the, by those, by those, those companies that need to hire police officers. And Fayetteville, both Fayetteville and Cumberland County have a very robust extra duty assignments where their officers can make a lot of money. So in addition to their higher salaries, they have a lot more opportunities to do that. We do, as, as every agency around, we have a take home, take-home car program. Obviously, it's, it's designated by policy, but we have the program so that our officers can take their car home. And that's just not a benefit to the officers too. A lot of people think that's just a benefit to officers. That started in Indianapolis thirty years ago. It was called the Indianapolis Plan. And what the chief at that time said, hey, if we can increase our visibility, then we can reduce crime. So not only is it a benefit for officers to take it home, but when those extra officers are driving to and from work and they're parking their mark car in their driveway, if you're going to come and down the street and look to break into a home or something, you think twice about it because there's a mark car. So there's benefits to the community as well, not just to the officers. And then we, we do tomorrow, we, we hold department meetings. I hold at least two a year. If we have something significant to discuss, we hold more, but two a year. And that gives me an opportunity to stand up in front of my officers and staff, tell them where, what we've done so far, what we're looking to do, get their feedback, get their gripes and try to make things better. So again, as you have to do transparency to your, your community members, I have to be transparent to my, my officers and staff. And that's what we do. And then we provide updates. So conclusion. This is a saying I, I read when I was researching this. It says, pay people what they're worth or someone else will. And that's exactly what we're dealing with here. Other agencies are, are paying their officers more and we're starting to lose our officers to those other agencies. Pay and manpower proposal, like I said earlier, is prepared in a fiscally responsible manner. I recognize the town's inability to pay what those other two organizations do. However, if approved, it will make us competitive and will pretty much eliminate recruitment and retention issues. We're confident, discussed with my command staff, that if we can, we can do this, we're, we're going to be, we're going to have people knocking on our door to come here. And that's what we're hoping for because we're going to get the best officers around. We, I did not recommend raises for all positions because that would be fiscally, fiscally irresponsible. Most of my civilian staff are on comparable salaries with Fayetteville and Cumberland Counties. Some needed a little bit of tweaking, but there's two or three that I didn't even recommend a raise for because they're right where they need to be. So I didn't, we're not just trying to pad the books here. Initiatives to generate revenue. When I first got here, we were missing out on a bunch of ways to generate revenue. Now, that just doesn't come to the police department. It goes into the general fund. But we implemented wrecker services. Our tow trucks that tow for accidents and stuff like that, they're making money off of us because we, we call them out and they tow for the accidents. Well, every other municipality charges them an annual fee to do that. And that's what, we're, we're tow, that's what we implemented. We, we offer a service now where people can come where they have to get fingerprinted for their jobs. Other agencies do it. We charge for that as well. We're charging for copies. We have a, we, we are going to start to see heavy returns in our asset forfeiture program. What asset forfeiture is, is taking proceeds of criminal activity and using them in law enforcement purposes. And that's where our task force officers come in. We have one of our task force officers now, we don't get all of this, but we seized five hundred thousand dollars just two days ago, as well as a kilos of cocaine. They were, worked with a bunch of different agencies, so they all get a, taken at, but we're going to see tens of thousands of dollars out of that, out of one investigation. So what our goal is, is to continue to pursue those kind of good criminal investigations, not only locking up big, big criminals, but sometimes hurting, hitting them in their pocketbook is, is worse than sending them to jail. And we're able to use that for law enforcement purposes. Now, we can't pay salaries for it, but we can pay for training and we can pay for equipment out of that, which means that's less of a burden on the town. It takes eight to ten months to start seeing those returns. We just got involved in those things. So by this time next year, we're going to start seeing some returns. And if you ask Drew, we're starting to see them already, right? We see some checks trickling in. We're heavy on applying for grants. We just got that cops grant to help reduce the, the, you know, the burden on the town[1708.53] in hiring police officers. We got a governor highway safety program grant, $25,000 to buy computers. So we're trying to offset the burden on things, things that we definitely need to operate, but then this way, we don't have to come to the town with our handout for those, because we're trying to, we're thinking outside of the box to, to do that. We're going to be, we're going to continue to be aggressive in our grant writing and our grant applications. That's all I have. If you have any questions or comments.
I would like to ask the board, we have two presentations, we have one from the chief, and then we have a follow-up on recruitment and retention from our HR director. Would the board like to go ahead and ask questions of the chief, and then have the other presentation, or would the board like to hear both presentations and then ask question, questions?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to hear both presentations, because I think some of our, our questions might be answered in the HR personnel presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Protown. Anyone else? Okay, thanks, chief. Up next is our HR director.
Which button was this?
It's already on this. Yes, you don't have to.
Oh, I got you, okay. All right, well, thank you for having me, I appreciate it. How are we clicking? Let me talk to you a little bit about recruitment. I mean, so I think everyone knows that it's, it's really difficult to recruit in all positions throughout the United States. Our unemployment rate is about 3.7, so everybody is feeling, you know, that kind of pain. And so, you know, some of the ideas, the police department is doing a great job in terms of like their job fairs and all of that. And I think some other things that we could probably look at would be employee referral program. I don't think we currently offer that, but sometimes word of mouth and some incentive pay is very helpful in getting people in the door. So that's one of the options, and, you know, having that $1,000, I think is pretty reasonable, and you would have the employee come in, stay a certain amount of time before you would actually give out that money. And then the other thing would be, is that, you know, there is a possibility, we can hire people in before they're actually sworn officers, and let them go, and give them a, a salary, and let them go through BLE, we would pay for that, and after completing that, passing it, you know, they get a $2,000 increase. So that's another way. Currently, with, with targeting advertising, I think we need to have a redesign of our website, and, and maybe some, a professional video done, to kind of tell the story about who we are at Hope Mills, because we have wonderful things to offer, we don't tell our story, it's on our website, and so we have a fantastic benefit program already in place. So that would be one of the things, and using particular job boards that focus on police, which would be Go Law, Enforcement, The Blue Line, Officer List, that would be some other ways that we can do that. There's going to be costs involved in all of that. Partnership with colleges and schools, and getting in there, offering job shadowing, curriculum development, and maybe a junior police academy. There's some other agencies throughout the United States that do that, offering stipends, uniforms, you know, college credit, and maybe even kind of thinking about, hey, if you go to college for two years, we pay for it, how about you come and give us two years or three years, on a contract basis? We have the, the TAP program with the military, and I'm not sure if the police department's actually, you know, partnering with them, but that's also another opportunity, getting with them, and maybe getting in there and doing the same thing. You have the MPs or other military individuals that are getting out, they have like a usually transition period, and we say, hey, come over here and let us help you, and train you, maybe go through BLE, have a job, that type of thing. And under representative candidate markets, I don't know if we're actually doing that, but you can partner with churches, you can partner with all kinds of community organizations, our Cumberland County Workforce Development Center, Employment Security Commission, to kind of see, hey, what, what kind of people are looking for jobs right now, and can we get them in the door? And then the other thing is technology. So we have, you know, the new generation, they, they love technology, and maybe we can do something out of the box with virtual reality training, providing recruits with immersive experiences, gamification, developing interactive and engage, engaging online games and that type, would be kind of fantastic. The other thing would be geo-targeting, and basically that is, you know, kind of like the mobile phones, and you're on your computer, all of a sudden, things start popping up that you're interested in, and we would hire a company to do that, so that we're targeting that, those, those particular groups and markets that would say, hey, these might be good people that would want to be police officers. All right, and on retention, this is just some, some things that we can think about. Hope Mills offers a great benefit package. I just don't think, like I said in the beginning, that we do a very good job of explaining that to people as an incentive to come, to come to work for us. So we don't currently offer flexible benefits right now in terms of remote work, compressed work week, flexible hours, which I think would be, you know, pretty fantastic, and that's a low cost to us, and adding additional days to both the vacations, sick accruals, maybe some additional personal holidays. We have 14 right now, but, you know, would it really hurt us to add a few more for that work-life balance? The retirement plan, currently, we have a 5% contribution, whether an employee contributes or not. Maybe there's something to think about in matching other municipalities throughout North Carolina that are offering 7, 8, 9%. And professional development. So I'm really, you know, big on that, but we don't really offer anything like that. So when we have employees that are with us for a while, why not giving them a bank of money that they can use for, you know, whatever, college, this, that, and whatever? And of course, if they don't use it, then they lose it, and, and, you know, it kind of rebalances every year. And employee recognition, appreciation, we don't have that currently, I think we have had it in the past, but quarterly, quarterly recognition with a cash payment. Everybody likes cash, and everybody likes to be recognized, and some of that goes a long way in keeping our employees, too. Wellness benefits, currently, we pay, the town pays 100% for employee-only, and we have nothing that we contribute to individuals that want to add, the family, the spouses, children. So it'd be wonderful, wonderful if maybe we could add maybe a 20%, 30%, so it brings that down, because it's astronomical. It's almost impossible to insure family and, you know, spouses and children, especially when you're making, you know, a little lower, lower money. That's it, that I have. If you have any questions?
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we've had two excellent, thorough, transparent reports, and we appreciate both of them. So now, I will ask the board individually to start with questions that we may have as we gather information and fact find toward making a decision, and I will start with Commissioner Craver.
All right, my questions are going to be directed toward, toward the chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, in October, the previous board voted to commission an outside agency to do a comparison study on all the town employees. Is this report the police portion of that study?
No, ma'am. I had started this prior to that, and I think my proposal was an impetus to the town, coming up with a pay study for the, for the entire police department, if I understand correctly. You want to?
I think Commissioner Craver may be speaking about the previous pay study that wasn't completed. What this is, is chief provided this information to the previous manager, it never made it to the elected. And so when he brought it to me, I took it to the elected around October this year, which is what ultimately greenlit the current pay study that we're under. And so what we're looking at now is looking at the portion of that pay study that is giving recommendations for PD, and so that's ultimately where we are now.
And you are the person that prepared this report?
The one presented tonight, yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Why didn't you present this to the previous board in October? I know you have a date of October the 15th on it, why wasn't it presented to them prior to this board taking over?
I don't make those decisions, ma'am, I, I present it to my boss, my boss presents it to the commissioners, and then they decide when I'm going to present it. I, I would have presented this a year and a half ago if I had the opportunity.
I will add it was, this specific report that he is giving is what was given to the previous board. Ultimately, they made the decision to do a pay study for the whole town, as opposed to just focusing on PD. Since that time, like I said, chief and I have been having very extensive conversations, and it was when he presented the critical aspect of, of the fact that he didn't think that the officers could make it to the end of the pay, the pay study, and that's when I moved forward to see if we could do something a little bit more aggressively.
You also said that our police are leaving for more money. Over the past year, how many actually left for more money?
Over the last year, one left, one left earlier in the year, and then within the last two months, six already, with four more telemeter going through.
For more money?
More money, yes, ma'am.
Got it. Well, I was looking at the salaries.
And I think, as Mayor Bellflower said, tonight, there's no public comments, and I'm going to ask my officers not to make any comments, but I know many of them want to sign up to, for the public comment portion on, on, on the 18th, to, to let you hear from them directly.
I understand that we all want more money, and I'm not asking these questions to let you think that I am not for you to get pay raises, but it is my job to protect the taxpayers' money in the town, and do with it as we feel like is important. So please, don't look at me as I'm trying to keep you from getting a pay raise. I'm not, I'm just trying to get some questions answered, so that the citizens of the town that are looking will also know what is going on.
I understand, I understand completely, and they, and they, and they should know, but yes, they're leaving for more money. They used to leave for other issues, we've worked hard to prevent that from occurring again, we have a good team here, and now it's, and it's, and, and I'll say this, because this, I think this was discussed previously, I don't have any officers leaving for $1,000 or $2,000. They're dedicated to the people of Hope Mills, they're dedicated to the agency, they're hanging on now, because I've begged them to, and I've asked them to, because we have a vision together to bring the Hope Mills Police Department and make it one of the best agencies around, the number-one agency around. So they're not leaving for a few dollars, but when they're looking at it, and they're comparing the salaries of those other agencies to this, to their salary, and they know that they can just drive an extra 10 minutes and work for these other agencies in the same county, and make, depending on what rank, you know, 15, 20, $25,000 more, that's a significant amount of money that will benefit their families. And as their chief, as a human being, and as a taxpayer, and as everything else, I couldn't deprive any of my officers from making a decision that, that better helps their families in that regard.
I went over all the, what they're getting now, and what you're proposing. I didn't really see rhyme or reason in, I mean, they jumped from, well, here's one, that you have two officers that have been with the department for one year. You have one of them that you want a 14.5% raise, and the other one, 21.6% raise.
For one year, ma'am?
For one year. You have two officers. Why wouldn't they be getting the same percentage increase? Or why wouldn't you be asking?
Well, I'm not basing it on percentage, I'm basing it on that step, that proposed step plan. So if the starting salary is going to go up from $40,915 to $48,000, then that's the raise that they get. Every officer's raise that you see in that plan isn't based on a certain, on a specific percentage. I didn't deal with percentages. I based on what these other agencies are offering in their step plans, to allow them a vehicle to proceed, to proceed through the salary range, and then they, they're placed in that step plan based on their years of experience.
Well, I would think that, that if they're with you for a year, they'd both be making the same amount, and would be getting the same pay increase. Just like.
It's difficult for me to respond to that, because I don't know what officers you're referring to, and I don't think we should.
Well, you know the ones that have been with you for a year, you gave them to us on the list.
Correct.
Just like you have here, you have three with one and a half years. One is making more than the other one, and you've put in a 14.5% increase, and the other one, 17.3%.
Well, again, that's, that's what we're trying to avoid in the future, and that's the problem we have, is that officers with the same amount of experience are making different money, because there's never, no rhyme or reason for when they were hired at, what salary they were hired at.
Well, if they were just hired a year ago, you're the one that hired them.
Ma'am, I, I don't.
Why wouldn't you have started them off at the same salary?
Everybody started out unless they had previous experience, so they may be here for a year, but, and, and again, to answer that, that, that question, the right way, I would need to know what officers were referring to, because I can't, I can't just hazard a guess on, on what you're talking about.
Well, you can go back to your report that you gave us the other day, and they're listed right there, and you can tell.
I, I understand, I understand that, and anybody with those years of, with the years, again, I just refer back to that step plan, they are going from whatever they're making now, to their position in that step plan with their years of experience.
Yeah.
So if somebody has less than a year, they're going to go from $40,915 to that $48,000, if approved, obviously, I'm just using numbers, because that's what the step plan says. If they have more than that, then they're going to, and they're, they're going to be at their second year when, by the time, then they'll go to the second year of the step plan. Can we refer back to the step plan? Can we get back up there? I don't know how to do it.
Some clarification?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, not this.
Chief, so if I'm understanding, essentially, you're trying to do it like a, like a set pay scale, like the military has, and that's all you're trying to do, is balance it out so we don't have disparaging pay issues.
Correct, and I'm just looking at.
Like, so entry level's going to get, just for throwing numbers at, $50,000, person in two years, $53,000, and stuff like that, so that's what you're trying to negate.
We're going to pull that step plan up, right, yeah, and, and, yes, correct.
That's not the way this is working out to be. I just think that.
It's these numbers here that you see, the current, the current salary, what they're making now, and then the new salary, what they would be making, and then the difference. So whatever they're making now, I took their years of experience, I looked at that chart, because this is what I'm proposing, you folks, this is not approved, I get that, but this is what I'm proposing. So an officer with one-year experience is going to move from, well, any new hire is going to start at $48,000, right? An officer with one-year experience that, that's already been here is going to jump to $49,500. An officer with, with, with two-years experience is going to go to $51,000, and so on and so forth. That's, there's no, I didn't, I didn't say this person needs an 18% raise, this person gets a 7% raise, I just simply looked at their years of experience, and put them in their place in that step program, and that's why I highlighted the benefits of a step program, so we do away with this disparity, and it's very easy, not considering COLA or, or, or merit raises, you know, merit, you may or may not get a merit raise based on your, your, your evaluation, I'm sorry, evaluation, yeah, performance, right? So you may not get that, or you may get less, but, but cost of living is decided by the town, you folks, and then, but years of experience, this is, this is why it simplifies it, and it's fair. This way, if I have two years on the job, and someone else has two years on the job, we look and go, we're both making that. Unless, unless you add, unless you add incentives like degrees and stuff like that.
Mr. Mayor, and Commissioner Craver, but you are talking about previous experience, not just experience with the town of Hope Mills.
That's correct, ma'am. That's correct.
And I'm thinking, maybe, maybe that's where the disparity is coming from.
That's correct.
Not just a person that's been here a year, but they could have had 16 years prior experience.
That's correct.
It, it says that here, it, these are with the town, let me see, right here, years of service, right here.
Years of service, and that includes everybody, that includes, that would include other.
If you've got a person who's been here, how can he have service with someone else?
No, you're, you're correct, ma'am, the years of service is actual years on the job as a certified police officer here, in this report that I'm giving, but that, that, I'm confused on what you're asking, because I'm simply taking their years of service, I'm looking at that scale and say, three years equals this, two years equals this, so some, you know, some may have a little more time on and would get a higher raise, some may be closer to where, some, some of their salaries may be closer to where they would fall, and within the, so they might get a lesser percentage. This would equal it out, and then going forward, it's very easy to be fair.
Yeah, well, I would, I would just think that if you have officers that have been here a year, they should all be making the same thing. Been here two years, they should be making the same thing. Three years, they should be making the same.
Well, this, you know what? I'll tell you what's going on, is this is what I brought up earlier, is that, that starting salary increases each year, the starting salary increases, because if there's a, let's just say it's a 3%, Drew, just correct me if I'm wrong, right? If it's $40,915, and there's a 3% raise, the starting salary goes up 3% too, right?
No, only with the COLA.
That's what I meant, the COLA, yeah, right. So whatever the COLA is, that's why the starting salary, that's why the starting salary goes up. So I'm hiring at base-level salary. So for argument's sake, somebody got hired at $40,915, and then the COLA, they, they could get, they could get hired in November, right? And the COLA, the, the starting salary goes up with the COLA, and now the starting salary is $41,938. So I'm starting at the, whatever the starting salary is of the town. I don't determine that.
Yeah, but I would think the other person would also get COLA, and the same percentage, wouldn't they?
But this is, but this is where, and this is what I was talking earlier, as the starting salary goes up, and the COLA, it's, it's, it's. goes up and the COLA, it's it's the it the salaries get compressed, and that's why this pay scale is so important.
Well, I just it, all right, let's go to this one. And you have down here that you hired a two captains.
Yes, ma'am.
And you said just hired, so I'm taking that to mean that you hired them in October?
No, ma'am. One September, one started September twenty-five and one started November first.
Okay. You both, they were started out at sixty-five thousand dollars.
That's because that's the starting salary for captain, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And now you're asking for both of them to get a twenty percent pay raise up to seventy-eight thousand dollars within three months of employment.
Sure, and I'll and I'll tell you why. Because both of these captains were are highly regarded. Captain Bray Boy was was served as the the special agent in charge of the alcohol law enforcement unit for North Carolina, for the state of North Carolina, for nine counties. Captain Dever served as the head of the SBI, the special agent in charge of the SBI, same thing, for the same nine counties. They are extremely talented, and we are fortunate to be able to get somebody with that level of experience, just their rolodex alone, but their connections and and their state resources and their experience. Captain Dever was the SBI part of their responsibilities is conducting investigations on officer misconduct. He's our internal affairs officer. What a better person to put in that position that's had all of that experience and did it for the whole state of North Carolina, for those nine counties. And it re and to speak to your point is, they could leave here tomorrow, get hired by Fayetteville or Cumberland County, and make make what they're making, which was a lot higher, right?
Why didn't you start them off at the seventy-five thousand dollars to begin with?
I didn't. I started them at sixty-five thousand.
And I, why, if you're asking for a pay increase to seventy-two, is it seventy-two thousand or seventy-five?
I advocated for the highest salary I can I can get them, ma'am, and I and I have to get it approved.
But with just a few months-
I would have liked to start them at eighty-five, so they they were closer to, I mean, if that's what we're talking about, I'd like to change my proposal and see if we can get them hired at eighty-five.
Well, that's what that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't you have started them off at the higher amount when you hired them?
Because I work within our budget, ma'am. Like I said, I try to do this as fiscally responsible as possible, and I hired them what what the other captains were making that retired. So they started at that salary. I would love to pay, hire all of my officers at the salaries that officers holding the same rank in Fayetteville and Cumberland County are making.
Oh, I'd love for you to be able to do that, too, but you know that's not going-
Fall in favor? I mean, can we vote on it? I mean, it's just, let's put it to vote. I mean, I I did this because I did this because that's what we're able to do, you know, and that's what the town manager approved and discussing, and to be financially, you know, fiscally responsible, that's what the other captains were making. But to keep these officers here, there's nothing preventing them right now other than their dedication and their commitment to me and in recruiting them to come to this agency. There's nothing preventing them from applying to Fayetteville tomorrow or Cumberland County and holding the same rank there and making thirty-five thousand dollars more. So again, I know we can't pay them as high as Fayetteville. I know we can't pay them as high as Cumberland County, but giving them a slight raise like that, which still puts them at twenty-five thousand dollars less than the person holding the same rank in those other two organizations, it 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 incentivizes them to stay here and help us get Hope Mills to be the police department that it that it could be.
When was the last time that the our police officers actually got a raise?
Well, they get an annual raise, cost of living and merit, which is which is administered by the the board, date, come up with the numbers with consultation with the town manager and the finance director, a significant raise, from what I understand, it was about ten years ago.
Yeah, it hadn't been a significant raise in quite some time. Typically, the practice here for about a decade is hire at the base salary, and you get a two percent COLA. In the last four so years, I think it started before COVID, the COLA's been cut in half, and then it is also only instituted in January. And so there hasn't been a significant increase. And so without the step plan, what you have is you don't have a realistic expectation of getting an incremental increase in your salary when the only increase you're getting is a half of a two percent COLA, cost of living.
All right.
So that's why I think the call the the step plan will be so instrumental because you can actually put a system of incremental increases in place. At least I think that's what his approach is.
I just want everyone to be treated fairly, and if you they've been here a year, they and as they stay with us, their pay goes up fairly.
And that's what this is all about, ma'am.
One person gets this and another person doesn't get that.
Ma'am, I know you've you you just got elected a week ago, but maybe you'll-
I've been on the board before, and I have a lot of business degrees.
No, ma'am, I wasn't I wasn't critiquing your qualification. What I was going to say was, as I know you don't know the way I operate, because we've only met a few days ago, maybe my officers will speak to more of it on the eighteenth. Everybody gets treated the same here by me. I don't care who you are. You get paid the same, you get treated the same, you get respected the same, and that's it. What's good for one is good for the other. Nobody gets unfairly disciplined, nobody gets paid more, nobody gets thrown. It's 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 based on fairness.
Have you promoted anyone yet to the deputy chief's position?
No, ma'am, that job was reclassified to the to the title of major, and yes, ma'am, we hired somebody at the position of major.
Okay. Well, you have an increase here from eighty-five thousand to ninety-four thousand. Where will that money be used if you're not going to have a deputy chief?
Obviously, it won't be used because we don't we don't have a we don't have a deputy chief, but it's still on the books. So I just put that into the study, you know, in case you ever brought that rank back, this is where you would be. But right now, that money wouldn't go anywhere, and that's why I put the differences is NA. It's not applicable. That's that's just a that's just what the new salary would be if we had somebody in that position, but it's under NA because it's not applicable. That's why it wasn't included in the difference.
Chief, is chief, this may be a Drew question. Is that is that position funded in in this current year budget?
No, it is not.
Okay.
Switch to the major position.
Thank you.
To the major.
Okay. Well, I was going into the police chief, but I won't. Nothing in all the paperwork I've seen have you brought up any benefits that the policeman get now. Can you elaborate on these benefits?
I don't determine the benefits, ma'am. That's offered by you folks.
But you know what they are, don't you?
Actually, I don't. I I don't take benefits from the town, so I I know they get health benefits. From what I understand, they're pretty good. I don't I don't know what it entails. I I do know that the only thing I know about them is that the employee, I believe, is, please interrupt me, employees free, spouse and family, or there's a contribution for that, correct?
That is great, and I would also like to say in terms of what our HR director spoke about at the end of her presentation in terms of recruitment and retention, we're also overarching all of this is we're coming up with a very robust benefits package that does allow us to entertain some things that will not hit the budget but provide a significant amount of incentives, increasing the cap on comp time. We currently have a 401K program. We're talking about instituting a 457 pension plan in addition to the 401K, talking about increasing, currently, it's a five percent increase if you get a certification increasing at the 10%. We just doubled the longevity longevity bonuses and gave those out a month in in advance. We're talking about adding maternity leave for our female employees. So there are a lot of things we can do in addition to what we're doing to consider recommendations of the pay study that will, over a long period of time, make it a little bit more pleasurable to work here from an overall benefit standpoint.
Well, I believe in benefits, and sometimes the benefits outweigh an increase in salary. But that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Craver. I'm going to go to Commissioner Skorola.
So my questions are a little bit different, so let me go to my notes. So I know we talked about, like, going off of what from the slideshows the HR gave, the military transition programs and stuff like that, and Janice can speak on this a little.
Yes, that is on the agenda on the eighteenth. We've already moved on that, the TAP program, where it's a program where it supports our military personnel. When they're at one hundred and twenty days away from transitioning out of the military, the military will send them to us for an interim term trip program that they pay for. Mayor Bellflowers is even talking about us tapping into getting MPs through that program to possibly funnel them to our police department, back to benefits, talking about, like I said, paying for BLET training. I think right now Chief Don just said that we sponsor with a letter that would basically with discount for BLET, but what 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 could we do to pay for that, maybe with a contract that they will have to stay here two years? So there's a lot of different things with that TAP program. We've actually already engaged that, and the memorandum of understanding will be on the agenda for the eighteenth for approval.
And I apologize to Mayor Bellflowers. We did discuss me discussing our BLET thing, but it wasn't on the PowerPoint, so I kind of slipped my mind. But so we do sponsor people for BLET, but there's a difference between sponsoring and hiring people to go, right? So we sponsor, so what happens is somebody, a young man or woman comes in and they want to attend a BLET program, and they request that we sponsor them, and they bring a letter from the from the B from the BLET program. We do a quick criminal history, make sure they're not, you know, want a felon. We sponsor them, they attend a BLET, we encourage them to come back to us, and what that allows them to do is there's a huge significant reduction in tuition to attend a BLET program if they're sponsored, but there's no guarantees for them to come back to us. We encourage it, but there's no guarantees. Paying people to go to BLET, we'd love to pay people to go to BLET. But again, Fayetteville and Cumberland County are paying people to go to BLET. They're just paying them a lot more to go. So if they're going to get paid to go, that's 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 the problem we're having. We we would love to pay them to go, but that's the problem. They're getting and and Fayetteville and Cumberland County uniquely, both Cumberland County just started it, Fayetteville's had it for a long period of time, they started their own BLET program. So now you get hired, you get paid a lot more money, and you get to go right to your own department and go through their training class. We're forced to use the community college system in order to to send ours, but it's something we're definitely interested interested in doing. It's just, again, it comes back to finding people interested in going at that salary.
So one of my other, well, one of my concerns, not necessarily concern, so Lisa had talked about some of the different benefits we're trying that you guys want to try to implement. Is there a way, now, where's my ex-military in the room? Where's my ex-military? There we go, we got a couple. Command climate survey, who knows about those command climate surveys? Is there a way we can do some kind of survey to see maybe prioritize, hey, I'd rather have a 401K match or something like this and have that so we can get actual input from the the all the officers?
We can definitely do that. Our approach was to do the 401K and the 457 combined. So what you'd have is, right now, we have the 401K, we don't have the 457. So the 457 would be in addition to that, but only if they participate. And so we've been talking to finance, and all of these ideas are things that would not be major hits to the general fund. So what the the idea is, while you're considering salary increases that do hit the general fund, what else can we do that provide a significant amount of of benefits that do not drain a lot of money from it?
And that's where it not just the 401K and all this other stuff, maybe like, I I don't know, insert, like, have a half day or something. I I don't know kind of size you guys can get, but just have input from your, you know, your officers. That way, you know, we can-
I think that's a good idea.
You know, hear what they want to have, you know, so they can have their say. I know they're going to, you know, probably talk on the eighteenth as well, and that's great. But that way, we can have it like, okay, you know, without names, anonymous, you know, that's how they do command client surveys, so ten percent.
And I think what I hear from the elected is giving them a voice to be heard. And so what that poll does is, you know, before, you know, we're subject matter experts, but I'm not a police officer working in the community. And so what are their thoughts on some benefits that they would want to see added to some of these packages? So I think a poll allowing them to participate with it.
And that way, you know, when it comes for us to be like, okay, so they want a 401K, whatever, whatever, they want this thing, how can we work this better into the budget? And it gives us a better idea of how we can try to financially plan for this, you know. What did I have? You talked about, Lisa, you talked about targeted advertising. Myself, Mayor Pro-Tam, and actually the interim town manager, when we had went to Atlanta, we had talked with one of the companies that did the website, the videos-
CGI.
Yep, CGI. And we were actually looking into doing that kind of stuff, so it would help with recruitment and stuff, and and there were some other stuff that we looked at. So that's already in our our back of our heads. I don't have any more questions, but I do have a statement. By all means, you know, obviously, utilize your chain of command, but if you guys need to talk to the elected because you want, if you want to feel, feel free to reach out to me. I don't know about the rest of them, but you can reach out to me if you feel like you want to be like, make your point across before the meeting, the eighteenth, you know, by all means, go ahead. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Skorola. Commissioner Legg.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, good presentation. HR, good job. As I look at all of these faces, I see a lot of faces that I've seen for twenty-five years, but I see a lot of new ones. If you follow those old faces, I don't mean bad bad, you may be in following good footsteps. I think you've got a good leader here in the chief, and how many military people do we have in here retired?
Some are still active in reserves and stuff, too.
That's great. Thank you, guys, for your service, and ladies, if you served in the military period. Thank you. Mr. Bellflowers, Mr. Skorola. We're going to work on this as hard as we can. I've already tossed over so many numbers this week that gave me a headache. I sat right here at this desk for two hours last night by myself going over this. Me and my computer. Gosh, I'm about lost for words, but thank you for the job that you do. Thank you for protecting us and our families. And Santa, it's good to see you here tonight. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Legg. Commissioner Marley.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really have any questions. I do have some comments, and if everybody would bear with me. First, thank you, Chief. Excellent presentation. Thank you to our HR director for what she presented. Just a few comments about the chief that I want everybody in this room to know. The chief was in here all last week. He met with each one of us individually, pleaded his case for you all, even had phone conversation with him after that. He continues to fight for you every day. In all my years of being on the board, I will say that I've never had a department head defend their department like he has defended his department. So he is to be commended for that in my eyes.
Thank you.
Little story for each one of you, and I know people don't want to hear this, but I started for the town. I graduated on the Friday, started here on the Monday. I worked for the town for almost twenty years or so, and when I walked out the door, I feel a pain because what I was making, the newest firefighter coming in the door, was making what I was making walking out of here after about twenty years. So I feel a pain. I know exactly what the chief is talking about. I want to thank the officers for the job they they do because, you know, I've had them out to my house before, they've done a- you know, I've had them out to my house before. They've done a lot for me, and I appreciate that. This is for the manager and our finance director, just a statement. I do feel like we need to try to do something in the interim to keep our officers in this town. And Mayor, Board, my personal opinion, I understand the problem. I know we got a, it needs to, something needs to be done. I'm just looking for a recommendation at this point from our managers to what, you know, what he recommends this board do. And I would, you know, if it's okay with the board and it's okay with the manager, Drew, I'd like to, I'd like to see them work together. And I don't know that something can be finalized or finished before the 18th, before the meeting on the 18th, because I know there's a lot of numbers to be crunched, a lot to look at. But if at all possible, I would like to see them bring us a recommendation that this board could vote on in a timely manner.
That's the goal, Commissioner Marley. That's the goal.
Thank you, Chief. Thank everyone of y'all.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Protem McCray.
Hello, Chief. I don't have any questions, but I do have a lot of, I have comments. I'm gonna try to restructure because I have notes everywhere. I would like to say, well, first of all, I want to say thank you all for what you do, and that's not cliche. I really appreciate it. To be completely transparent, you came into, you came into some challenges. And we asked you, would you work through those challenges and not only to recruit officers, but we also wanted to retain good officers. That is the conversation that we had with you when you came on board. And I believe that you are saying true to your word with that. I was on a call today about challenges in employment with municipal government. Police officers top the list of the challenges of jobs that we will have a challenge fulfilling and retaining. So to say that, we are not going to be able to nickel and dime ourselves out of this. It is not going away. We are competing not only with Fayetteville, Cumberland County, and the other surrounding areas. We are competing with the nation now. I really, and some of this is indirectly related, but I really need you all to come and show up when it's budget time as well, because we were faced with people in May that were very upset about a budget increase. I voted for it, and this is one of the reasons why. Because when you talk about a reduction in services, this is what your, a reduction in services look like. It's not just festivals. This is what in one department, a reduction in services look like. So I really need, this is a budget issue. It is not because we don't want to pay you. It is not. But we talked about a year ago or two years ago, the town is growing. We need to do it for our employees across the board. We need to be competitive. We need to make sure that we're bringing on employees in all departments to match the growth of the town, because what we are doing now is being reactive, and that is what we tend to do. So I know what your challenges are. This report, some of this information is not new to us. I think a lot of it relates to funding. I think we can be as creative as we can with some of the benefit package. Some of the things that they suggested on the call today, we are doing, they talked about modernizing the workplace. We have invested a substantial amount of money to include some of our ARPA funding in police equipment. A lot of those change orders with the public safety building came from you. We did not like them, but in the long term, it does save us money and it creates a better environment for our officers. So we have, we have made a significant investment. The education plan, I do have a background in education, so I advocate for that. I advocate for people to be professionally development. I do believe they should be compensated based on their training and their education. They also talked about 401K plans or like investments. And they talked about the days of people coming into your municipality or anywhere and staying for 30 years. Now, it's not really going to happen. And so we need to make it as attractive as we possibly can for even those people that seek to do other things. But there are things that we are doing. So there are issues, but I think overall, I am just saying, when it comes to dealing with the budget, I really wish that you all would show up at the budget meetings, just like you do today, because this is what, when you, this is what happens when you have, when you have to cut services for your citizens, and we can't afford to do that. So again, thank you all for what you have done. I'm sure I'm not covering everything I want to cover, but thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Okay, I guess it's up to me now, Chief.
Yes, sir.
The amount of police officers that are in this room tonight is a testament to the department as a whole, that they care, and we care about each of you, and we want you to know that, that not only do we care, we value your service. Our town has made a significant investment in the public safety building, a $17 million investment. What we haven't done, and we haven't done it well, is we haven't invested in the people that occupy those rooms. We haven't invested in the folks that drive our cars. We haven't invested in the folks that operate our equipment. And I will say this, Chief, because it's not one department, because every department in our town works in concert to deliver services to our great community. The more annexations that we approve, the more rooftops residential, the more commercial business that we bring in, we have to provide services to everyone. And if we're not adequate to provide services to the population we have now, then how will we provide services to future annexation? Because people are wanting to live in Hope Mills more and more every day. Chief, could you bring up the slide on vacancies?
I can't, but I can get somebody to do that.
The challenge before this board.
Next one. This one there, sir.
Yep, that's it, right there. That's an immediate problem. Whatever option that we look at on December 18th, and Commissioner Marley is right, is that we will come back together on December the 18th. We're hoping that you'll present some options for consideration and approval by this board. But that is one, right, that slide right there is one that we have to fix. We have to get back to our current level. Now, I know that we've got a grant for three, but then we're missing some police officers as well. Now, I'm not sure, are we not recruiting those, or we're not actively recruiting them, or we're looking at the base salary increasing, and then we can recruit to fill them?
That would definitely help. I mean, our recruiting efforts are, like I said, we're at Fayetteville Tech today, where we aggressively recruit. It says, like, you know, even when Robinson County is penning our officers more, it's tough to, it's tough to compete with that. So I think, what I said, very honest, you know, I'm a straight shooter. If we increase our starting salary and we, you know, we pass something like I proposed, our recruitment and retention problems are going to be reduced. I really believe that with the other things we have to offer, the things that our team, and I mean it, our team brings to the table, is attractive to officers from other agencies, where people looking to start a career in law enforcement. And if we can get the salaries up, we're gonna be, we're gonna have waiting lists.
Both. I and Mayor Protem McCray work at Fayetteville Technical Community College, and we have the best, and I will say this, the best educational program. Our next BLET class starts January 16th. I'd like to see a sponsor. I would like to see this board get behind some salary increases and some incentive plans where we could put some officers in that BLET program that will graduate in May and be part of the Hope Mills family, because that's what we are in this room. All of us here are family. That's who we are at the college. Now, the other comments I have is that somewhere between now and December 18th, there'll be some proposals for the board to consider. This is an immediate problem, and so is pay. One of the key things about the $18,000 pay study that the previous board approved in October has results coming back in March, April of '24. That's, that's too late. That is clearly too late for this department. And we, as a board, we recognize that. That's why we called this special meeting tonight. That's why the report, Chief, is very thorough, and we want to be transparent, completely transparent with the public. So that's why we have the urgency. Now, what we're asking is give this board the opportunity to look at the proposals that will be recommended by you, Police Chief, and by our interim town manager. And every police officer that's here that works in our department, have the input, share the input with the Police Chief, and be part of this. Now, we didn't get here overnight. We're not gonna fix it overnight. Not one person's gonna fix it, but all of us in this room can have an input on fixing this problem, at least putting something in place now and building on it in the future. And I think maybe that's where we go. But we start here, and we work the problem. Give us, give this board the opportunity to do that. And that's what I'm asking the police department to do. Those are my comments. Any other comments from the board members?
Okay. Drew, when we go over this on the 18th, well, I guess we would have to figure out, in the event of a raise, where would we pull the money from? So, okay.
Yeah, Drew and I have been having, we've been having some pretty extensive conversations.
I'm getting into the dirt of it, you know, come on.
The main thing I've been saying the entire time, it's not if we should do this, but how. I was crazy enough to, I mean, to echo Mayor Protem, Dr. McCray's sentiments. I was crazy enough to come in here in May and whisper a tax increase in an election year. And Chief knows this. He asked for nine offices in the budget, and we said no. That was in May. And here we are. And so we have a tax increase. We have a 1.9 budget shortfall looming. We have some difficult decisions to make. But I'll say it again, it's not if we should do this, how do we do it? The finance director and I have been meeting very extensively, and everybody's been involved. That's one thing I think everyone needs to understand in terms of transparency. We all, I think, Mayor Bellflowers and I called it the war room. And we've been in my office pretty extensively, and everybody has been involved, from the Police Chief, the Finance Director, the HR Director, all the elected. We've had some very, very intense conversations on how to do this. And so you will have options to consider on the 18th. And like our elector said, give us a chance to see what we can do. Just understand there's some difficult decisions we need to make. There are some things that we're doing to try to make this a little easier in terms of benefits packages and things of that nature, but we are desperately trying to do something to address these needs.
Thank you very much, Chancellor. Next item up on our agenda is a reminder item. Monday, December 18th is our next regular Town Board of Commissioners meeting here. Town offices will be closed on the holidays on December 25th, 26th, and 27th. We moved official comments behind the reminder item, and in this time, I will ask the commissioners, starting with Commissioner Marley, and working our way down for official comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any further comment right now. Just, we just got a lot of work to, gotta get to it.
We gotta get to it. Commissioner Scrola.
Whatever comments I thought I had are now gone, because I'm focused on, I'm focused on this. So, but great to see everyone come here and show support, especially your fellow officers and stuff like that. So that's really great. But yeah, that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Legg?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I echo Commissioner Scrola when I said it's impressive, when I say it's impressive to see you guys backing your chief and his recommendations with the night's appearance. I only have Chancellor do something with Drew, bring us back a wise and smart proposal that we can work with. You know, we're working against some of the citizens. I'm sure we're not working against the police department, and I'm sure we'll have people from other departments that may want to get involved in it. But maybe we fix one thing at a time as we go along, and we'll be back where we belong. And I appreciate you all coming out again, and have a Merry Christmas. If you need any of us, I'm sure you can give us a call. Your chief won't say nothing to you. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Legg. Commissioner Craver?
I just want to say that I'm glad all of you came out tonight. And forgive me if you got upset with me, but somebody has to answer to some hard questions. It's not that I am against any raises. I certainly am. I wish I could give you, all of you, $100,000 a year, and if we had the money, I would vote for it. But thank you for coming out, and we'll see you, I guess, on the 18th.
Thank you, Commissioner Craver. Mayor Protem McCray.
I, there's a, you know, after going to so many swearing ends and listening in on some, many of them over the past week, there was a lot of official and formal things that I should have said that I did not say the night that I was horny. And I'm not going to say that tonight. I'll wait until the 18th. But if people often ask us, what are the things that keep you up at night? And this meeting and the information presented tonight are certainly one of the things that keep me up at night. So again, thank you all for coming out, and we take what you have presented seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Lastly, as the board has already echoed, we gotta get after it. And that's what our challenge is going to be. And that's our, our direction, is to look at what these options are going to be between now and December 18th. And again, I want to thank each one of you for attending tonight. I wanted one more round of applause for the chief and our HR for their presentation. Well, folks, we're down to the end for staff comments. We'll start off with interim town manager.
No major comments. I just commend our elected for having the courage to consider this. You guys are the ones that have to sit up there and make these difficult decisions. I always share this video from Pastor TD Jakes about courage. He said, if you don't want to ruffle any feathers, dress like them, do whatever they do, and sit back and don't do nothing. But do you have the courage to stand in front of a difficult decision? And an unpopular decision, do you have the courage to do that? And I commend you guys for the expediency on moving forward with this. This is something that Don has been dealing with for quite some time. So I definitely commend you guys.
Thank you, interim town manager. Our town clerk, Ashley.
Good evening, Mayor. I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Okay. All right. It's time for a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed?
That is motion.
We adjourned. We adjourned.